All right. Welcome all. Janine, can we have a roll call please?
Yes. Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Barry Altschuler.
Here.
Leah Collister Lozari.
Here.
Erin Chandain.
Here.
Peggy Carum.
Steve Wang.
Here.
All right. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? The mic. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, welcome to our Tuesday, October 18th Committee of the Whole Meeting. We thank you for being here. During our summer workshop, the Board discussed having various formats periodically throughout the course of the year that would allow more interaction with our community on important issues that are facing the district. So this evening's agenda is going to be a little bit different than our typical regular board meeting, and I want to give you a quick overview so we understand what's going to happen. So for the first 30 minutes or so, Dr. Hunt is going to provide us an update on the work that's taking place within the district this year that aligns with our strategic priorities. These brief presentations will be on the following topics: health and wellness specific to school safety, personalized learning, and future readiness. After that presentation, we're going to open up to the public for a question and answer session. During this time, the Executive Council members will move around with their microphones to make sure we get the questions and comments on the presented content. So we'll be having a Q and A session on the material that gets presented tonight. Okay? After we conclude that Q and A portion of the meeting, I will open up a regular public comment, right? So if there's individuals that would like to speak, you'll have the two minutes to address the Board of Education. After this, then the Board of Education is going to adjourn our meeting here, and we will move over to the new addition opened earlier this year, provided through our referendum. Thank you again to the community for allowing us to do so. And at that time, Board members will be available for questions and answers and conversations as we tour the new space. District administrators will also be available at that time. And Board, as a reminder, we have to adhere to open meetings X, so no more than two Board members may have a conversation with anybody at a given time. So we'll have to police ourselves, and I'm sure the community will help police us as well. We need to make sure that we're spread out and easily so people can have these conversations. All right? So Board, are there any questions with how we're going to do this? Awesome. So then I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Dr. Hunt, for the presentations.
Great. Welcome, and thank you. I see a lot of students in the crowd tonight. It's great that you're here. We appreciate that certainly. I love that you said I'm going to present, but there's a lot of microphones and a lot of people are going to be stepping forward to help out. So maybe while I'm doing this introduction, if you are presenting tonight, you can go ahead and step forward and find your seat. Janine, are you clicking over there? So this evening, we are going to present specifically in three core areas of our current strategic plan. So those core priorities are health and well-being, personalized learning, and future readiness. I wanted to take a step back and just commend this Board, this community, our administrators and teachers. Over 4,000 people participated in giving input into Framework 220 last year in that we developed a framework for continuous improvement as a school district by the development of our mission, core beliefs, strategic priorities, and learner profile. A lot of the people that have done this work unfortunately aren't here tonight, but a lot of the people seated in front of me have led this work and very appreciative of all that you do for our school district. I think it's important that we start with our mission when we have any conversation. And when you look at our mission of empowering personal excellence in every learner and you start to really think through that, it's a pretty audacious task. It's really getting to know students at a personal level, providing rigorous content that continues to help them both academically, socially, and emotionally as well. Those are our six strategic priorities coming out of the strategic planning process last year, and again, we will focus on three of those tonight. Just a reminder to our Board of Education, we are actually engaging design teams around each of these priorities to identify or better refine what the core work areas are and what action steps will actually take place. In fact, we've got our first meeting of design teams next week, and I would imagine we'll be out in front of the Board of Education sometime in January to give you an update on how that work is going. So tonight, again, we're really focused on three key areas. I've asked this team to present, and I don't want it to be overwhelming because I asked them to stay within 30 minutes to provide you the update. But again, I think what you'll find is this strategic plan or the framework that we have created is driving the work that we are doing in the district in hopes that we're moving forward towards the attainment of our mission. So thank those presenters tonight and certainly look forward to sharing this information with the Board and our broader community.
I have the first priority area, health and well-being, specifically focused on safety and security. Our district has been focused on safety and security for a number of years. I also want to thank the community tonight for supporting the referendum, safety and security, and being able to provide greater equipment and procedures in our building was a big part of the referendum, and you'll actually see some of that tonight as you're touring station campus with some of those safety and security enhancements. But you know, that work is never done through equipment and evolving technologies. There's always different things that we're looking at as a safety and security committee to see if there are things that would fit with our district in order to continue to improve and enhance security in our schools. One of the things that is very visible around the community is that the referendum has provided set of standards across all of our schools. So you'll start to see bollards going in as we complete Build 220 projects, revise front offices with how people check into the schools, compartmentalization within the schools. But as I mentioned, there's more and more things that we were considering during the referendum as well as new things that have come out and come to market since that time. So one of the things that we're looking at is are there ways for us to continue to think about any type of security enhancements with cameras and equipment attached to cameras, such as detecting or screening for either displayed or concealed weapons? Those are technologies that we're starting to explore and investigate. These are newer to the market things that we're looking at with other school districts, making sure that we're doing a deep dive on how this technology could enhance our security as well as how we would put that into our daily practice and operations. So that's one area we're continuing to explore. And the other area is we've had a school resource officer, SRO, at our high school setting for a number of years, and you know, that resource officer not only provides that everyday presence of having an officer in law enforcement on campus at our school, but there's a great deal more that goes along with that than just strictly enforcing laws and responding to infractions. You know, there's that piece of forming relationships with students, being a resource to go to for assistance as well as an educational component. And so one of the things that we are discussing right now, based on looking at what is occurring in our schools, is maybe broadening that resource officer and having a position at our middle school. So we're continuing to look into that and partnering with the Village of Barrington to explore that as an.
I have the honor of sharing some of the work that has been started for personalized learning. Dr. Byrne, who is leading that work, could not be here tonight, so I'm going to speak on her behalf. So our goal with personalized learning is to empower students to take ownership of their learning through meaningful experiences that are relevant to their interests, their skills, their passions, their strengths, and their abilities. A core component of personalized learning is the development of our learner profile. So we have rigorous content and rigorous core academic content paired with our personal success skills and habits that support those skills as well, and that's how we really get that strong, deeper learning for all of our learners pre-K 12, pre-K through 12+ plus. And so I know you've probably seen this logo before, but it does represent the learner profile that was created. Again, rigorous academics is at the center, and the learner profile is comprised of six skills that support and enhance the authentic learning of all learners. So it's essential that all learners in Barrington 220 can create, can practice advocacy, can empathie, can collaborate, exhibit initiative and self-drive, think critically and solve problems, and then communicate effectively as well. So the learner profile, as you know, was developed last year with a wide variety of community stakeholder input. We thank you again, and feedback, including a community input survey, the community learner or stakeholder learner profile group, the strategic planning summit, and then coffee and conversation that continues to happen with Dr. Hunt. And now that the learner profile is complete, it's important that this just isn't a poster hanging on the wall in our buildings and in our classrooms. And so the next step is for our district learner profile team to determine what the learner profile looks in practice. And so the team that's made up of teachers, instructional coaches, and administrators is working towards developing proficiency rubrics for these skills, creating progressions of learning development within these areas, and developing student reflection tools for each skill that support the student learning as well as support the planning of authentic instruction that brings this learner profile to life. So in the next portion of this presentation, Ty Gorman is going to walk through a couple of examples of this work.
So when we talk about the profile of a learner and we talk about the personal success skills, those tend to be more visionary. We all agree that effective communication is important, for example, but do we all agree on exactly what that looks like when a student is doing that well? Could we walk into a classroom and identify it when we see creativity or a student self-advocating? So one of the first tasks of the learner profile team is to take the visionary to the practical and start to identify what does this look like when a student is exhibiting these success skills? What does it look like when a teacher is explicitly teaching these personal success skills? So the learner profile team, one of the first things we did at an early meeting this year was what we call a looks like, sounds like activity. So if a student is practicing empathy, what is a student saying? What is a student doing? If a teacher is providing support for creativity, what is the teacher saying and doing? And so an example that we have here for you tonight is what we came up with for collaboration. So again, this is the same forum we were using in the exercise, and these are examples, brainstormed ideas of things that students are saying and doing when collaboration is happening in a classroom, what teachers are saying and doing when collaboration is happening in a classroom. And we went around to some different grade levels and captured just some brief examples that we want to show you tonight of collaboration in action. Because it's important to note that these six success skills were not selected because of a perceived deficit. They were selected because they're valued by our community and they're valued by our staff. And these things are happening right now in our district every day, and one of the roles of the team is to better support teachers in the future, how we can explicitly teach these and support these six identified skills. Together on a shared product, they were building a tree, learning the parts of a tree, and much of what they were doing was parallel, but it was a very structured activity. Every student was needed to contribute to the shared product in order for it to come out the way it was. So students were learning to work together on a shared product.
So we're basically trying to create a caption for a picture. He needed help by like how to spell stock and how to get the picture and seesaw.
Barrington 220, second grade students doing still a collaborative activity where they're able to work together, but this student had a little bit of freedom and took initiative because she saw a classmate was struggling with some spelling activities. And she had the freedom within the structure that the teacher provided to choose on her own accord to go and help her classmates. So still collaborative, still students working together, but a little more of student flexibility in how and when that happens.
We are doing lunar, solar moon phases.
Right now, we're answering which hemispheres would be able to like see the solar.
We'll think about it, and we'll try to do it, and then we'll come back and then we'll talk about it.
Move into middle school, students are clearly working in teams now. Students are self-defining what roles they will each play, and they are working together to solve problems with very little teacher interaction in the moment-by-moment problem-solving that they were working through.
It's a student-run class. We collaborate where we'll come up with ideas, and everybody kind of picks their own story. The biggest thing about working in a team like this, in such a team-led class, is hear each other out, listening to what do you have to say and how can I compromise with you so that we can make the best work?
High school journalism class, entirely student-run, student leaders work together with the writers and the editors to put together a shared product. All of the collaboration, all of the problem-solving is student-directed, student-run, and the teacher is there almost as an arbiter when students have conflicts and working through it. So just showing example of one of the profile success skills, all the way from early learning center up through high school, how it starts off as a very teacher-directed, very structured environment to one that if we're doing it right, students are free and have the skills and techniques to do these types of things for themselves.
I'm going to talk a little bit about future readiness and where we are in this process. Of course, just to remind you, future readiness engages students in innovative, real-world learning experiences that are not confined by time or location in order to develop global awareness and prepare them for post-secondary paths. So as we worked through the strategic planning process, we heard from a lot of our community members, we heard from a lot of our staff members, and even our students, particularly in our senior focus groups that we held at the end of last year. Blended learning and some of the tenants of blended learning that we've been doing in the district for a long time are, a lot of those, a lot of those skills are things that we want to be able to move forward. So what we're looking at through the flexible learning cohort is how to expand those blended, our blended learning program into something bigger. So we put together a cohort starting at the high school, and this is a program that will eventually be K through 12, but we're starting up at the high school level like we did with our blended program. And we've been meeting monthly, just a couple of months so far. And we decided in the first month that we would talk about the sort of, what we're doing well already in this area, how we're already following some of the tenants of what the strategic plan, where we want to go in our vision. And we decided that the best way, one of the, one of the ways we need to look forward is to visit some sites of some school districts that are already doing these types of extended programs. So we picked three school districts throughout the Midwest. We found one in Mayfield, Ohio, one very close here, Ridgewood, near in Norwich, and then another one in Wisconsin, near Madison, where we're doing some site visits as a group, and we're taking administrators, we're taking high school teachers, and we're going to these sites and taking a look at their programs. So the first program we, one of the first programs we visited was Ridgewood down in Norwich, and we talked about their process for how they are, they have a competency-based program, and what they're able to do with their students is the teachers refine it every year, and their students are able to work at their own pace. So just like we said at the beginning, being able for our students to have more control over the time, place, path, and pace of their learning, this program allows just that. This is a shot from the back of the classroom where if you look carefully in the upper-right corner, we have a teacher doing direct instruction on the topic of the day. Across the room in the front, we have students taking a test because they're already beyond the topic of the day. And here in the back of the room where the staff is gathered and where students are in small groups, they are working at their own pace and they're working, they're all working ahead, and they're all in different places. So it was very interesting to see exactly how this worked in real time. This is an example of one of our teachers at the high school who came with us in our group, and we were able to tour the school and go into the classrooms and talk directly to the students. That was the group I hosted. Steve McWilliams hosted one in Mayfield High School in Ohio.
So Mayfield High School in Ohio is probably the next iteration of Blended at Barrington High School. So they have blended courses, much like we do, but what they've done is they've housed many of the blended courses in, in Options Academy is what they call it. And what we're actually seeing here today is a learning staircase. Every week, they have a meeting as a cohort to kind of discuss group goals, got about 175 students in this particular cohort with juniors and seniors. And what we saw on our visit last Thursday is a real camaraderie built amongst the group. So many of the students are taking similar courses. During the school day, they've got flexibility of time to be able to make their own study groups. So for instance, I spoke with a group of seniors that were in a calculus class, and they really found it valuable to be able to step out of the class and that class of 14 or 15 that were assigned to this options program used their time during the day to take the studies that were focused on in class and to work together on problem-solving and developing their own understanding and knowledge. Along with this, what we observed was some real strategic just-in-time intervention because the students and teachers work in this small cohort together, they're able to intervene almost instantaneously. So if a student is struggling with a math concept, 4.3, that teacher has the ability to use resources right then and there to be able to get that student some additional assistance or to work with their classmates to try and get past that. So it's blended plus, kind of a blended cohort model. They also have a second entry level, so freshman-sophomore version of this cohort. And what you're seeing here is just students in a class that are actually working on separate projects, so they've got control over what they want to work on at that point in time. So Mayfield itself has taken what they call their Options Academy and broken it into that freshman-sophomore cohort. They can provide specific needs for those different grade levels.
Our third and final, our third and final visit will be at the end of this week. We're going to Clark Street Community School, just outside of Madison in Middleton, Wisconsin, and this will be another, another group that's going to this school. Looking at the whole flexible learning cohort proposed timeline, just to give you an idea of where we're hoping to go with it. Like I said, in December, we discussed some possibilities and how we wanted to expand blended learning related to our strategic planning process. In October, we're doing the site visits. November, we'll reconvene, talk about what we learned at all of our site visits, and start talking about what are some ideas that we have as a district to extend Barrington High Schools and Barrington 220's blended program. In December, we want to put together some sort of a timeline and possible resources and a presentation for the Board, so in January, we can bring these ideas to the Board and let you know what we learned, let you know where we might want to go with this, and get all of your feedback. And then we'll take the rest of the year to build out that feedback and decide where we want to go with a more formal program. So that's a little bit about flexible learning cohort in the future-ready area of our, of our strategic plan. Turn it over to Kelly to talk about learning spaces.
All right. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the professional development that was provided to teachers in order to prepare them to utilize the dynamic spaces that you're going to see tonight effectively. So as you know, last year, the district embarked in a major construction project at both of our middle schools. Part of the purpose of that project was to align to the research on incorporating natural light, air circulation, all of those kinds of things in the physical plant, but we also saw it as an opportunity to rethink how our teachers and students use educational spaces in a way to increase engagement and deepen learning. So to support our teachers in that endeavor, we partnered with Sam Chaltain and Chung Lee from Studio 180 to provide professional development for our teachers. Studio 180 is an international education, architecture, and design firm that helps districts across the world envision a new future for teaching and learning to match the opportunities provided by new dynamic spaces. So our work with Sam and Lee started last year with sixth-grade teachers, those who would be actually housed in the new instructional spaces. And I would like to take a minute to thank these teachers. This was incredibly difficult work, and I want to thank them for their openness to new ideas, their flexibility, and how they've really embraced this challenge. So thank you to our teachers in those new spaces. Our professional development was divided into three learning phases. So the first phase happened last spring, ran February through May, that included four full days of teacher professional development, where they worked together to develop mindsets and competencies that they need to utilize those dynamic spaces to their full potential. In Phase Two, that was over the summer, where teachers had the opportunity to engage in additional summer curriculum writing work that would allow them to reimagine lessons and units, develop introductory lessons to set expectations for the space. And then finally, we're in Phase Three right now, which is where those teachers can engage in three different choice options for professional development to enhance their learning. So they can engage in a book study with a group of teachers, they can engage in peer observation and lesson studies with each other to give feedback, or they can also engage in instructional coaching initiative work with our instructional coaches to improve their practice. And that's ongoing. So our teachers engaged, there were two main activities that they felt were most impactful. One of those was the co-creation of systems maps. So the teachers worked together in teams to develop maps that helped them to explicitly articulate the learning culture that they wanted to see for students, the norms and principles they wanted to include in their work, and then the outcomes they were hoping for students to achieve. This vision was continually refined as we continued to do more work and learning throughout the spring. The last activity that we did was in May, and it was right before the spaces were really open and available for us to use. We created essentially a board game for students that walked the teachers through a variety of learning scenarios. So as you can see, we have the floor plans out for each of the schools. Each of the teachers was given a set of Legos to represent their 25 students that would be in a class. Each teacher had their own, like, I'm orange Legos, I'm green Legos. And we gave them a variety of learning scenarios, like you've just given a pre-assessment, and across all three teachers, you've noticed a difference in skill set. How might you divide those students up across those three classrooms in order to meet their needs differently? And then they actually physically moved those Legos around to demonstrate how they would utilize that space. You're going to be doing book clubs with students based off of choice and interest. How might you engage students in moving around that space differently? So this really helped the teachers to think through the logistics as well as aligning lessons with each other and collaborating in a way that they needed to utilize this space. And so now I'm going to turn it over to the two middle school principals to share what this has looked like in practice.
So last, but certainly not least, so now we get to talk about the fun stuff, right? Where the action takes place in the classrooms. So, but the first thing I wanted to just mention, that the PD that we did last spring, starting in February, was very important for our teachers, right? You're just not going to move from one classroom into this and just expect to do the same thing. One of the things that they talked about being most important this spring was you need to talk to kids about the expectations and what that's going to look like when you're out in a large area space, right? What are we going to expect from that? And so whether it's in the large area, which we're going to see tonight, that's got all the other flexible seating, but we also have smaller, little classrooms as well. Now, there's glass, so we, the teacher can be in one classroom and can see her kids or his kids in these other classrooms. But what does that look like? What do we expect? And I got to believe that those of you that had the opportunity of being here last Thursday, when we really got to see the kids in action, I think you got to see a little bit of that. That really was an important piece of that. They spent the first couple of weeks doing that, and our kids have been phenomenal with using this space in an amazing way.
I think what they saw last week, too, is the journey started over five years ago when we started going to visit other schools to see models just like this and what those kids and students were doing. The professional development that Kelly spoke so highly of put us in a position that the administrators in the places that we visited over five years ago told us, make sure you develop your teachers so they can understand how to better access a space like this and utilize it for student support. So we're lucky that we had the opportunity to do that and the forethought to do it, and as our kids are now in these places, you are seeing more engagement, more collaboration. And what's so special is that both buildings, they're sixth-grade students, and as we continue to talk about transitions from elementary to middle school, this has helped in a transition aspect because now the collaborative experience that they're getting that's so wide open is engaging more trusted adults to the students. They know more than just their one Soul Studies teacher. It's also giving them the opportunities to meet more students and do more collaborative experiences because we'll have six-day classrooms open at a time with all of our students working together in that dynamic, which has been really special. And knock on wood, behaviors have not been, have not been an issue because of the process of our teachers starting year, working, making sure we understood how to utilize the space.
To piggyback off of something that Travis just said there, one of the opportunities that this space now allows us, so we could talk, I think, for probably an hour, and we only have 30 minutes, Dr. Hunt, and I know that, okay? But what I also wanted to share is we have four language arts teachers, okay? So they have shared with me, they're doing something now called Friday Focus, okay? At which point, the kids on a Friday morning through the School G page, they'll know which of the four language arts teachers that they're going to be going to in just a moment, right? And so based on the work done that week, the teachers on Thursday say, this group of kids are really having problems with run-on sentences. I'd like to work with those kids right for a little bit with that, right? So we open up all four of the classrooms, and we'll show you that here in just a little bit. So the kids take attendance, look at the School G page, oh, I'm with Ms. Raya, who typically isn't her teacher, but I'm going to go down and I'm going to work with her, and they do this rotation. It's just phenomenal. We could not have done that before, but the way we've got this set up now, it's good stuff. So we're super excited. And one more thing.
I told them there was a time limit. Hit them on the table.
You're doing so well. I know, but I just wanted to say, we, I do have six wonderful sixth-grade students here tonight, so that when we go, when we go to the back there, I'm going to bring them with, and then I would hope the community would like ask their opinion when we're back there. So they could be at home, cuddled up on the couch, reading a book, or watching TV, or doing whatever, but they're here tonight with us. So I really do appreciate these wonderful six people right there.
Thank you.
So.
So that's a lot in a very short amount of time, but I hope that both the community and the Board has the impression that the work that we did last spring is really providing clarity and direction for the school district, and there's a tremendous amount of effort going on to move us towards the attainment of our mission. When you look at learner profiles, or some school districts call them profiles of a graduate, often they become nice PR tools. You do the work, you put it out there, and it's a PR tool. I think what you're seeing here with our staff is we're doing the work to define what those things look like and talking about the progression. So we bring it to the forefront of that time in which we sit down and we're planning instruction, how can I insert or put kids in situations to demonstrate and practice these skills? So really commend that work in future-ready. I can guarantee you one thing, they will go to three different site visits, and whatever they bring back here will look nothing like one of those programs. They're learning, there's some great things happening, but they also have a lot of talent in the conversation about what is the next iteration for Barrington 220, and we look forward to. Tonight wasn't a presentation of an end product, it was a presentation of a beginning of a process. So I look forward to that as well. And then I'll, I'll just highlight the dynamic learning spaces. Space can certainly refresh, bring fresh light, and improve the HVAC, but it also can improve teaching and learning. And if you've taken And if you take the time to prepare staff and have them think through how to leverage space to create more flexibility along the way, it can improve the instruction, improve the learning experience for our students as well. And all of that's happening because of the work that's been put in. So I just want to commend our staff. And I think at this time, you know, open it up for questions specific to the presentation first, and I know we'll have public comment after that, but happy to hear from community members. If you just raise your hand, we'll have a microphone that we can bring over to you. I'm going to ask the team to maybe stay up here in case we need to lean on you for some responses, or board as well. You received a lot of information here. If there's questions or comments that you'd like to make, I think this time we'd like to move in that phase of the meeting.
Well, members, anybody have a question you would like to ask? Maybe get everybody warmed up here? Anybody?
I just wanted to offer, I think Barry and Steve and Katie and I had the chance to do what Mr. Alice was referring to and see the kids use this new space that you all are about to tour. And it's amazing how a change in physical space completely affects the way that students learn and teachers instruct. Like, this was nothing like three decades ago when I was in sixth grade. Like, the kids were moving around, and there were math problems taped to the walls, and, I mean, so super well behaved, but working like in groups and along table. It was nothing kind of like the lecture style that we were used to as kids. And so, it was, and then in another room, there were one-on-one assessments being done, and it really made me want to go back to sixth grade. So it was super cool to see that in action. And so, yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, and it's cool, it's so cool to see how this is dovetailing with our learner profile and our strategic plan, too. And when you see the kids learn and teachers instruct, you can start to see all of this come together. So it's really exciting. Just wanted to say that.
So I have a question about the flexible learning part, because I noticed that we talked quite a bit about like the blended program. But I guess I'm more interested in terms of the strategic, how it plays out like at other levels, you know, elementary and middle school. Like, I feel like it is playing out in a certain way. You know, Ms. Ralph's talked about like, that the teachers can meet with specific groups depending on what they're having problems with. But I'm not sure how it's being addressed in terms of as a strategic priority.
Can we ask Ty maybe to discuss that?
Can you clarify a little bit in terms of what it looks like at different levels?
Yeah, at different levels, but like, for example, like, I know there was a change means the sixth grade math. We've got all the kids in the same math classes, right? And so I'm curious as to how it's being worked at, let's say, the sixth grade level, or even in the elementary level, where you have just one classroom, but you have kids learning at different paces, right? And so I know that in the presentation, there was a lot of focus on blended learning, but I'm assuming that there are other things happening elsewhere that maybe just wasn't discussed.
Yeah, when we talk about blended learning in Barrington, we're talking largely of, there's a number of different blended strategies, but in Barrington, we really focus on three. So a lot of the attention is paid to flexible learning where, as Mr. Alphs was talking about, students go to different teachers, different classes. And so when we talk about flexible, the flexible model of blended learning, we talk about students attending different places, or at the high school, there's classes where some days are optional attendance days and things like that. There's actually a number of blended strategies that don't involve students changing teachers. If you talk about flipped classroom, for example, you have students who have what would be the traditional lecture available to them in digestible chunks on a SchoolG page. So they can view the lecture multiple times, they can pause it and take notes, they can go to other resources and then go back to the video. You have station rotations where there are kids in class working in different groups based on, it could be a number of different things. Could be based on interest in a topic, it could be based on the ability of a certain skill. There's a number of reasons why you might be in different groups within the classroom. And so the technology that we have from the One2World program allows for those three different strategies to work. What the spaces are doing is to make it even more feasible, because if you picture a traditional rectangular classroom with 30 students working on different things, it could become kind of loud and chaotic. But when you have the spaces that go with the technology that go with the pedagogy, then it starts to work really well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I would add on to that, you know, we made the decision to start at the secondary level as kind of an extension of what was already happening there. And this doesn't flip overnight. This is a tremendous amount of work over time, and you want to be thoughtful about it. You take the one school that was, you know, Mr. McWilliams visited last week, they're starting now to push that concept down to the middle school now that they've refined it along the way. So part of this will be over time, quite honestly, as we kind of move and start these conversations. But the priority of looking at, you know, flexibility and time and space and when I can master content and what that means is certainly started, but it'll be an evolution certainly over time.
Based on the three school districts that you're looking at mimicking, what metrics did you use to pick those school districts? Like, what were the things you were looking for?
I would caution with the word mimic, because I don't think we're out to mimic what they're doing. We're trying to learn more about what the, kind of the journey they took and where they are today, and then digest that here and say, what makes sense in Barrington as our next step. Quite honestly, there's been different exposure in these schools from members of our team that knew that there were pieces and parts that are worth looking at. In terms of metrics, the team members were given certain questions to evaluate while they're there, they're going through the process of bringing that information back. I think their next meeting is really focused on debriefing on those visits and looking at what pieces make sense to pull forward. And then there's the economy of where you can go and how much you want to travel, and, you know, all of those things played into it as well.
I have a question about the flexible learning as well. So one of the experiences I was able to have earlier in my career was mentoring students on teams, and most of them were high school level. And they were almost always a flexible environment, meaning, you know, they could learn on their own pace and so forth and bring things back to the team. One of the things that was a definite noticeable thing was that some students really thrived in that environment, and they rose to the occasion of self-management, which is what they need for the next step. But others really struggled and needed a lot of structure, and they did not do well. So I wondered if there was going to be some sort of process before these kids get into this where we, you know, figure out what kind of learner they are and if they will thrive in that environment.
Certainly, you know, one of the lessons coming out of COVID is, you know, that kids can thrive in different environments, and we know that. But you take the Mayfield model, they have a very traditional school in place for the students that thrive more in that structure and that environment. So I don't think we're looking at, you know, completely changing and taking away every option. We're looking at, can we expand this? And the other piece is, this isn't for a certain type of kid in terms of, this isn't for gifted, for advanced placement, or for a special education student. You hit it on the head when you said, it's got to be the right student that can handle that freedom. And I know a lot of these places put benchmarks in place. There's a minimum progression you have to make, and if not, that environment's not working. We've got to pull you back. And those are things that would certainly be built in.
Can I add a little too, Bob?
Yeah.
One of the things we learned from the blended program we have in place now is, you mentioned the self-regulation skills, the self-motivation skills. There are particular skills, executive functioning skills, organizational skills, that students have that allow them to thrive. And not all of our students have developed those skills to the level that they're going to need once they leave high school. And so I think we're in a really good place to have this conversation that we're having because we've learned so much from our existing blending learning program of how to identify and support students who don't have those skills yet, and how to help them build those skills for when they leave our district.
I see we've got civic students here. Don't be shy. Engage.
How about the front row? If you're going to dress that nice, you should ask a question.
I know. Right. One more here, one more here.
So for the learner profile, I believe you said that there are six variables that are being measured, communication and collaboration. I'm wondering what the other ones are, and exactly what the data would be used for.
Give that up in front of you. She's getting it.
The animations. Oh, my gosh. Good lord.
Can someone out there share that, because I can't read it from here.
I could speak a little bit to that. So, yeah, the learner profile, the six different indicators, or again, skills that we're looking at to develop. You can see our create, so creativity, practices advocacy and empathy, collaborates, exhibits initiative and self-drive, thinks critically and solves problems, and then communicates effectively. And I think when you asked about measures, a lot of that would be for self-reflection of the learner. So we want to make sure that we empower our learners to really look at whether it's exemplars or progressions and decide for themselves in a self-reflection, well, where am I on this, and how could I improve? What's my next step? And that's where the teacher comes in and says, okay, maybe we can work on this a little bit, let's talk about how we can grow that together. So it's really a cooperation between the learner and the teacher facilitator, or between student and student as well. I think that's really important because we know our students learn from each other so much also.
Important to recognize with that, I think it was at the board table this came up, of putting rigorous academics right in the center of there. This isn't a shift away from the standards and what we have to teach. It's recognizing the importance of developing those skills and developing learning situations and environments in which we're learning about that academic, you know, the rigor of our academics in an environment that promotes those skills. So that's the shift. It's not a move away from, you know, teaching the standards and teaching kids reading and writing and, you know, the necessary skillsets.
I could even go further and give a real concrete example. So in our elementary STEM class today I was in, they had a list of critical thinking stems for students to ask questions that students can ask each other to determine how they were problem-solving and if they were getting to the depth of critical thinking. So that, it's already starting to happen, and it's very exciting to see in our classrooms. So.
I know that we're going to be doing more work on flexible learning, and that's exciting. As we do this work, I do hope, you know, and I've mentioned this before, you know, I have teenagers, and, you know, during COVID in particular, I think that there was definitely, there was the ability to cheat, right? I mean, it's happened. So, and I know that as we go into this work, that we're going to be looking at all different ways of presenting information and using flexible learning spaces and remote learning and in certain situations and things like that. So I just hope that we can, you know, continue to keep, you know, sharp parameters on, you know, when we are giving assessments, you know, that we're making sure that it's fair and accurate, and that we're actually getting kids to learn the material. And civics kids, I know you're like, ugh, but you're mostly seniors, you're out of here anyway. But anyway, that, you know, is always a concern, and it's something that I think that was, you know, I don't think that these were kids trying to, you know, cheat or whatever, but, you know, during the pandemic, there definitely was some of that happening because people were sitting in their own bedrooms, taking tests, and, you know, it was, they're kids. So, anyway, that's my one little plug.
I have a question about the safety and security. So Jack Newickman, I know you said that we were taking a look at kind of new technologies, right, that are available. And so kind of what are we using to determine whether or not that's an appropriate technology to use in our district? Because, you know, we obviously don't live in like a high-crime community, but yet our community tends to match the profile, fortunately, of where we've seen some very tragic events occur, right? So I deeply appreciate the standards, and I, you know, as a substitute teacher who substitutes in quite a few different schools in this district, I definitely see that and appreciate that. Hey, when I walk into a school, it's going to look very similar to like other schools, and the safety and security procedures that are in place in this school are very similar to the ones that are in place at other schools, and that's fantastic. But as you evaluate those, like, are we benchmarking with other schools? Are we, you know, how do we make the decision, how do we make those decisions about like, hey, this is the appropriate next step to take for a community like ours?
There's a number of factors at play, right? So I talked about how the referendum is helping us with, we now have more current state-of-the-art camera systems in our schools than we've had in the past, right? And when you upgrade equipment, then it opens up new avenues for you to explore even add-ons to that, right? Because the equipment can support new technologies, like technology that's now built in where it's using artificial intelligence and software, that it's constantly scanning what those cameras are seeing, for example, right? Against a database of a whole lot of images of different types of weapons that may exist. And so it's scanning that, and so the technology's helping us because the cameras can pick up on things now that maybe our old camera system couldn't do. So it's about us evaluating, can our new equipment do new things, and is that appropriate for our campuses? Does that help us enhance security, improve, react and respond to things that are happening on our campus would be one example of many. With safety and security, I don't like to talk a lot about detail, so I just gave you that one little tidbit of something that's very tangible, and it's because of the referendum allowing us to actually upgrade and enhance all of our cameras. Those are add-ons, and there's a number of things that now it opens up new opportunities for us.
And I would say, I think when people think of safety and security, they automatically go to the things that harden facilities or technology to look to identify. Equally or more important is, what supports do you have for at-risk students? What kind of training do you have in terms of identification of behaviors? What interventions and supports are there? Those are equally or more important in that, and that's part of the conversation as well when we're talking about safety and security.
We're always looking for that balance of prevention, right? To prevent things from happening, but then also, what is our response in the moment, and how do we react and respond effectively? So we're always trying to balance those two things, and those are always the type of conversations in our safety and security committee that we're having.
I have a question regarding the One2World program, and I was wondering, what is the process that our district adopts to measure the successfulness and how successful and how effective it is to support the students in learning? I know we've all seen the wonderful things that the students are able to collaborate and, you know, create on these wonderful devices. However, one of the biggest concern among many families is the distraction that the devices brought to us. And I was wondering how the district is assessing or collecting data to bring back to the community about, you know, how our students are using these devices, how the devices are helping in their learning, and to what extent? Some of the key metrics I'm looking for and the data points, for example, are, what are average screen time of the students by age group, by school, by grades? And what are some of the top mostly-used apps? And what is the proportion between time used on device in classroom versus time used in lectured instructions, right? And some other data such as top browsed websites and most top searches and stuff like that. I think these are, personally, I am very concerned about the distraction aspect of these devices that are bringing. No doubt that these devices, you know, as adults, they are great tools in helping students to learn. However, they create health concerns. For example, my son has been complaining this entire week that his neck is sore. I see my daughter crack her neck like every 15 minutes. I don't know how many kids here share that as well, but there are health concerns as well, distractions that I'm very concerned about. But there are health concerns as well, distractions that I'm very concerned about. So sorry for the long-winded question. Bottom line, I'd like to know what is the process and the performance metrics for the One to World program? And whether the community can receive those reports and the processes for that?
I know the district went through a comprehensive device study a year ago and was presented to this board. I don't know, Matt or Ty, if you want to go into the specifics around that study and those metrics.
Since the Wonderworld study began, we have actually been doing formal and informal research each year. And the last formal research we did was a device study that we came out with at the end of last school year and reported that to the board. We generally have an annual report to the board where it's a Wonderworld report that includes all the research that we have done during that school year. So we have several links we can send you right now if you're interested in reading those reports. As far as what metrics we use, we generally base them on the vision and the mission of the program, the Wonderworld program. And those are things we've been collecting from the very beginning. We've used focus groups, we've used surveys, we've used, we've gone into classrooms. We had a video series showing the community how we use devices. We've been doing this for about nine years now, so we have a lot of data already. Ty is someone who works directly with the teachers all the time in this area. Is there anything you'd like to add in this context?
Just as you mentioned, the informal research, you've mentioned the studies that we, annual studies we did with community members, students and with teachers. On a more informal basis, just the conversations happening with teachers in terms of, there is a vetting process for teachers asking for apps. So we get an idea of what apps the teachers want. That helps us understand what, what apps and websites they're using in terms of that. So in terms of informal research, just getting the understanding from those conversations about what it is the teachers are looking for, why they're looking for it, and directing towards the most educationally appropriate apps in that sense.
Can you provide us your contact information? We can send you the links to all of the formal research reports we put out. And we'll be in the new wing at the end as well for any specific questions you have.
Ty or Matt, do we still have that, like a technology task force? Isn't there like a stat?
We do.
And also some parent universities that?
That's a great ques, that's a great question. We have a district technology committee that's been in place now for eight years. That's comprised of students, I'm sorry, of teachers at all grade levels at all schools and all the different subject areas and administrators as well. And Ty does a series of parent U, parent U workshops where he specifically teaches a lot of the issues with, that you were talking about, with, with distraction and also just the ability for students, students or even adults to stay on task when they're using devices can all be solved with Focus, which is an app and a system built into the iPad that any, any parent has access to set up for their own student. And, and go ahead and add any kind of limits that you wish. And then of course, students can set it up for themselves as well if you wanted to, if you wanted to have them in the conversation as well. So do you want to add anything to that? So that's a general, another general answer.
Great, well, not seeing any more questions. Why don't we ask our sixth grade students and principals to go get set up in the area? If that's good? And then if there is, while they're, while they're departing, is there anybody else that would like to address the board on another topic? Okay, seeing none, then we will declare the public comment closed. We do have one more agenda item, which is to look at our agenda items for the next meeting. Let me pull that up real quick. So our next meeting is on November 1st. And we have recognition of our national merit semifinalists, our Special Olympics award winners. We'll have our special public comment on ISB resolutions. Gosh, the students don't want to stay? You guys don't want to stay and see what?
There's cookies down there.
There's cookies, yeah, there's refreshments. Oh, man, oh, man.
I think they're bypassing the doors.
Speaking of the resolutions.
They're going right for the, maybe there'll be cookies left for you guys? I don't know.
Speaking of the resolutions, how can parents see them so they can comment on them? Is there a?
I think that we even put them in the email that we distributed last time.
Oh, okay, I didn't know we did, okay.
And, but they're also on the ISB website, but we can make sure we distribute them again.
Did they go out and send them?
I believe they did.
Why don't we include them in the update that goes out tomorrow? We'll include a link.
Yep, thank you.
Great, yeah.
And we have two action items to approve our ISB delegates and approve professional development for board members. I'm going to do the triple I conference. And we'll have discussion items on 30-day enrollment status, ERCD update and BHS course offerings.
I would anticipate a resolution regarding our property at Woodland as well.
Okay, another action item?
What does ERCD stand for?
Well, it's diversity equity.
It's diversity equity.
Okay, E-R-D-I.
What did I say wrong?
I was like, what?
Sorry. Okay. All right, so do we have, again, we're gonna adjourn here and then move down the hall. Do we have a motion to adjourn our committee of the hall meeting?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Cookies, no way.
Okay, do we, do we have any?